Candidates, I have a notepad which has the numbers 2, 1, and 0 on it. When you get to minute number 2, I'm gonna hold it up, and you go, "Oh, I have 2 minutes." And the same thing with 1, and then I'm gonna hold up 0, and then you'll say, "Thank you!" And then we'll move on. Any questions? Okay. One teeny-tiny adjustment. Remember how I said we were gonna do it a certain way, and then I explained how it's gonna work, and we did all that? Now I have an adjustment, a caveat. Eric Smiley is here with us tonight. Thank you, Eric, for coming out. Eric is staying downtown at the Brother Life Mission, and they close their doors at 8:15. So in order for him to have a place to sleep tonight, he needs to be back downtown by 8:15, so I'm gonna jump the whole train that I said I'd laid out neatly in these little cars, and we all can see how it's gonna go. And I'm gonna ask Eric to speak first, just so we get that touch.
Thank you very much. Hello, my name is Eric Smiley, and I am running for position 9 on the Seattle City Council. I graduated from Old Dominion University in 1986. I was Secretary General of our Model United Nations, and I was an actuarial analyst for the Good Health Plan of Washington. Now, as you've heard, I live at the Brother Life Mission. I volunteer at the First United Methodist Church Shared Breakfast. I read to preschool kids on Beacon Hill. I tutor elementary school children in, not Highland Park, but in Beverly Park. And I participated in the Climate Reality Leadership Corps with Al Gore last year. Now, among the issues I hope to address on the City Council are affordable housing and the impact of growth, preschool and the importance of an investment in education, fair and balanced public safety, settling the homeless population, farther reaching mass transit, reducing sales taxes and property taxes. Now, Seattle is one of the most beautiful cities in the world. With care, we can channel the growth to all our benefit. Affordable housing. I've been speaking with thousands of people all over the city during my campaign. Hard-working people are having trouble finding a place to live. Buildings are going up, but not fast enough, and the impact on our infrastructure is being neglected. More can be done to have responsible growth and keep the roads and sidewalks the community needs. Free preschool. Education is the most important investment any community can make. Starting out right makes all the difference in the world. This is where understanding and social skills and a sense of community begins. This is also where public safety really begins. There was a preschool girl who I was reading to last year, and I told her she was a butterfly. So she jumped up and starts saying, "I'm a butterfly, I'm a butterfly." So I thought maybe I should've told her she was a Supreme Court Justice if she could jump up with an imaginary gavel, "I'm a Supreme Court Justice, I'm a Supreme Court Justice." But preschool is only the first step. Equal educational opportunities enable growth, which pays big dividends. I propose offering paid associate degrees in either healthcare or education for Seattle high school graduates. Both these fields are growing in demand, and the skills learned here will be useful in every type of employment, as well as in one's personal life. Public safety, public safety, public safety. We call for public safety. There is a lack of understanding and communication about what public safety is. Our police department is responsible for keeping people safe. Could we call them public safety officers, so this became clear? Could people call for public safety when emergencies arise? I don't see why not. But I do see we need to be assured that the use of force is only a very last resort. All use of force must be carefully examined and more alternatives identified for addressing emergent situations where lives are at risk. Now, as you heard, I know something about homelessness. To a large extent, homelessness is the other side of affordable housing. Where the half the people where I live have regular jobs and paychecks, what they don't have is housing options. Some have issues which outreach and understanding help with. Letting people know that they're a part of our community is a big step in helping them find a place. Regular opportunities to sit and talk with people in different circumstances benefit everyone. Not only are there homeless people, but there is a community that can be supported in their efforts to lift themselves up to something better. The homeless are a community of a sort, and so you can't just pluck one here when they're there. It doesn't work. Funding. Let's reduce the sales tax. Let's reduce the property tax levies. Let's proceed with an income tax. One which reduces the regressive taxes and allows us to fairly provide for the growth we are experiencing. Now, I think Steve Ballmer said we might not have the big influx of tech people coming here from California. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, and now back to our regularly scheduled voter's pamphlet order, Shaleen Strong.
I like to hold it. Thank you for being here this evening and for taking time out of your schedule. This is actually one of the last big events that the candidates are doing, and so we save the best for last. I'm Shaleen Strong, and I've learned a thing or two about what it is to be displaced, but what it is to also learn about surviving a trauma, and what that does to someone's ability to see the world after that moment. In 2006, my wife, Kate Fleming, drowned in our basement in Madison Valley. It was in that moment I realized that my life was forever changed. But it didn't stop me, because when I went to Harborview Medical Center, they told me I had no rights. Again, I was told at the funeral home, "You have no rights." And that seemed unconscionable to me and unacceptable, seeing that we'd spent 10 years of our life together, we shared a mortgage or home, and our faith. And yet that wasn't sufficient enough that a 33-year-old woman standing before them could make those decisions. I knew all too well that would happen again, because I had been told hundreds of times that it happened to someone else throughout this country. I've been on a bit of a crusade, if you will. Met with President Obama, I've sat with Secretary Sebelius, I've talked about the complexities of our lives. And I said, "It's marriage. It's the language we need. It's the word that I could've said at that door that night that would've given me that ability." And it's these things that I think about when I have entered into this race, and what matters most to people, and that is equality and equity. And the lens in which we look out into the world makes us the leaders in who we are. And what I am now is Commissioner of Civil Rights for the State of Washington. And that's not just for one person or one group. As for every single citizen in the State of Washington, I am tasked with upholding and reading about the laws against discrimination for you. And I do that every day, and I make sure that the laws that protect transgender people and the rules were put in place. And I've defended them, and I've defended them, and I've defended them. Why? Because it's the right thing to do. And it's what we do when we look at the world and we realize that people need protections. People need the language and the understanding of who they are. And for me, that is the person I will be. Now, who am I? I am a small business owner. I sit at a desk every day with my wife and make sure that her physical therapy practice sings. I'm in the trenches looking at health insurance. Frankly, I should be President of the United States right now, because for 25 years I have been telling people about their health insurance. And the hardest part is, "I'm sorry, your insurance will not cover that." That's something we need to stop, and we can stop. But it's the way in which I work with people, and the way in which I interact, and the civil rights work that I do, that comes from my heart, and it comes with having an extreme ethical background. I believe that my staff needs to be paid well. I believe that the people that work for me deserve respect, and I believe that the way in which I will work for you is not my agenda, but it's your agenda. When you have an issue and you're not getting resolution, please pick up my phone. It will be on everything that I have. And the number-one thing I will do every morning when I come into my office, if you elect me, is I will say, "Who called, and what emails did we receive? What work do we need to get to first?" Those will be the priorities. How do we address the biggest issues in our city? I could tell you I have all these things I want to pass and all these platforms that I want to stand on, but what I can tell you is that you are the first person that matters. And first and foremost, it will be your voice that I listen to in the work that I do as representing you on the council. Watching what happened in Washington, D.C., and the divisive nature of that has no place in our state, in our city, and in this nation. I think it's time that we do things differently, and I think it's time that we put people on the council who actually want to work with the entire city, not just the certain interests of the city. And I mean that. I'm not gonna promise you anything other than being accountable to you. You are my boss, you are the person that put me there, and it is my responsibility to be your public servant. And if you vote for me, that'll be the person that I am for you. Thank you so much, and have a wonderful evening.
Teresa, I think you're there. Teresa, you're there. John, did I see John? You gotta see if you're right here. All right. I'm standing. And next up, we have Rudy Pantoja.
My name's Rudy Pantoja, and I would really like to thank you for inviting me here tonight. The reason why I'm running for Seattle City Council is I'm running for you, for your vote. I grew up in North Seattle in the late '60s, was a product of the busing program in Seattle. Diversity is not taught, diversity is learned. I'm Hispanic, a single dad who's raised a daughter since infant, and if that's not marginalized, I don't know what is. And what I want to say to you is that I support the police, I support education, I support job opportunities for those that want to start up small businesses. And I wanted, the reason why I'm running is I went down to Seattle City Hall this last year to speak to the Seattle City Council, thanking them, thanking the North Precinct for helping me get my adult daughter off the streets and thrown in jail, because she had an opiate addiction. I tried everything in my power to get her off the street, to save her life, to get her into treatment. I went to the Seattle City Council, I went to the mayor's office, with no avail. And so I had to work with St. Homish County Commander Pat Slack and Hope Soldiers at Everett to help me, because the city services in King County was inept. Our city leaders were inept. The mayor had no programs or assets for us family members dealing with family members who had no hope and down with dope. They did dope. And I tell you this, it's a dangerous, dangerous thing we have in the city. I really believe we need to go after the supply and the dealer. And we know who's delivering the stuff. The south of the border, not Mexican-American, they've cut down the marijuana plants, and they're growing opies, poppies. And the poppies are coming, that's where the opiates are coming from, south of the border. Our kids are getting it, young lives are being destroyed. I'm getting a little off-keel here, I apologize. It hacks me off to know that when I go to some of these candidates that are running for office, they don't like the way I acted at City Hall. They don't want to hear about my family or my mom's safety. They don't want to hear about it because I'm a bad guy, because the person that confronted me at City Hall had nothing to do with my mom, had nothing to do with my daughter, had nothing to do with the addiction, other than the fact that she put me on her Facebook and I was broadcast around the world. She didn't ask if I was a member with the King County Mental Health Board in the past, Drug and Alcohol Board in the past, and how hard it was for me to save her life and to protect our family. I don't care. And so I thank the Seattle Police Department for helping me, and Judge Chow for keeping her locked up to give her time to get treatment. She's in recovery, and I'm grateful for that. But not all candidates think alike. And I really believe that if I was to pick out any of these candidates right now, there might be 2 I would vote for. Me. And if I was to exclude myself, I think it's that Sarah Nelson. I like that Sarah Nelson. I think she's real balanced. I don't know if she's here or not, but I think she would bring a good balance to the Seattle City Council. Or Matt McGregor. Matt McGregor would be my second. But that's what I would vote for. You don't have to vote for me, but think about those 2. But I really do care about our city. I grew up here, I love my city, but I can't take it anymore. I cannot go to City Hall and be treated with disrespect because I have an opinion, and to have the social justice people freak out because they don't like what I have to say. I should have a right to express myself and not be threatened. Or you. And look at the housing and land use. We get chewed out, yelled at, stopped, snarled. It's a bunch of BS. I use that lightly. Wish I could say it Ballard-style, but I'm in Los Angeles, and there's names in here. I just wish I could cut loose, I can't. But I would ask you for your vote, and I swear to God, you won't be undersold. And Charlie Chong has gotta be rolling over in his grave right now, I swear to God, because most of these candidates...
Rudy, there's a last one. Thank you. All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Shaleen Seacrest.
Good evening. My name is Shaleen Seacrest, and I've been living and working in Seattle for a number of years. You know, recently I've dipped my toes into politics, and I've been learning a lot about what it actually takes to be a candidate for public office, because there's rules to this, and a lot of those rules are unwritten. But I've surrounded myself with an expert team, and it is an honor to stand before you today as a candidate for Seattle City Council, position 8. Now, the Shaleen you may know is the valedictorian of her undergraduate, a fellow for the Washington State Bar Association, a federal law clerk to the United States Justice Court. The Shaleen you may know is a leader of the NAACP, policy analyst at Urban Lea and the Alliance for Just Society. The Shaleen you may know is the business owner, the activist talking about No New Year jails and Black the Bunker. But what you may not know is how I did it. And that's through my community. That's through community coming together to make sure that people like me didn't fall through the cracks. And that's why I'm running. To fight, to serve, and to protect like hell our community. Because like many of you in this room, what I've talked to earlier today, I'm concerned about the growing divide between the have and have-nots. Seattle, we've got this decision-making where the top percent are the ones making the decision for the rest of us, under this theory that a rising tide will lift all sails. Well, we know that that's not the case for those of us aboard the Titanic. So I'm running for office because I'm bringing life jackets. Bring a life jacket to the woman who lives in the tent, who doesn't have a mental illness, she doesn't have a drug addiction. What she doesn't have is an opportunity. Bring a life jacket to the business owner in Ballard, who put everything that he owns into investing in his business. And as this city is growing so fast, if he's displaced, he has nothing to fall back on. And his loss of business is going to impact the wealth for generations. Bring a life jacket to the little boy at Rayner Beach High School, where here at the state level, we keep talking about the funding that we don't have. And he's relying on us, right here in this room, to be able to create a pathway to make sure that he can have a career path that's ready for him when he graduates. I'm here collecting life jackets. If you don't have a life jacket, bring a bowl, help me scoop out some water. And ballot's dropped, bring a bowl and your ballot, okay? But we've got work to do. And that's why I'm running. Because I know the power of the people inside of this room. I'm a product of that. And I'm asking you to trust me with your vote to be able to bring that power onto City Council. My niche is being able to get voices to the table. Those who normally don't get asked the question, "How do we make this work?", are being left out of the decision-making. I empower from the roots up. I take a grassroots approach to grassroots top decision policymakers. We know this works because we were able to get business owners, as well as employees, into the same room when we talked about minimum wage. We know that this works because we were able to get police officers and the mother who cried because she lost her child from police violence into the same room to talk about recommendations and police reform. We know that this works because we were able to get developers, along with longtime residents, into a room so we could figure out, "How do we fight gentrification? How do we stop displacement?" Those are the approaches that I'm trying to bring into City Council. Where we have the voices of community at the table, so we can lift as we climb. Now, back home, we always call public office from ego to wego. What that means is, my name might be on the ballot, but guess what, you guys? We are going to get elected into office. So if you choose to have me serve as your voice, consider this as a "we" are elected into public office. Continue to push, continue to have your opinion and what you want to see for Seattle. Together, we understand that we can grow Seattle forward without leaving anyone behind. I'm Shaleen Seacrest, Seattle City Council, position 8. Ballots are out. I would love for your vote. Shaleen Seacrest. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up is John Grant.
You're too kind. Can everybody hear me if I talk like this, or do you prefer the mic? Okay, I'm gonna go with the mic. The people have spoken. My name is John Grant. I'm the former executive director of the Tenant Union of Washington State, and I also used to work at Solid Ground, which is a social service agency. I have over 10 years of experience on affordable housing policy and homelessness. And I want to tell you why I've dedicated my life to that work. You know, we're seeing tremendous growth in this city, and we're seeing longtime residents getting pushed out, we're seeing renters getting rent hikes where their rents were being doubled. When I was at the Tenant Union, there was an apartment complex called the Lockhaven Apartments. It was over 100 units of deeply affordable housing. There were seniors there, there were students there, there were working-class people. A developer named Goodman Real Estate came in, bought the building, and their rents went from $900 a month to $3,000 a month. That's outrageous. And we have to push back against that kind of economic eviction. So I've put forward a policy platform that is gonna hold developers accountable and make sure that people can still afford to live in our city. I've put out a call for 25% of all new development to be affordable. Currently, in some parts of the city, like in downtown and South Lake Union, the city just passed a policy to require affordability requirements to as low as 2% of each building to be set aside. Is 2% enough for affordable housing folks?
No.
No. And I think we can do so much more, but it takes leadership, and it takes folks who are gonna be a voice for the community on the City Council. I've taken a pledge not to accept any money from corporations or developers. And 95% of my campaign contributions come from democracy vouchers. 95%. That means that this campaign is owned by you, it's owned by the public. We're gonna put the community's interests first and foremost. Because we know, we're seeing it happen in every neighborhood, right? We're seeing up-zone after up-zone. Meanwhile, homelessness grows in our city. We are seeing just the growth of income inequality, and it's the city's job, it is the city's role, to be the countervailing force to the market, right? Because we know the market is not gonna provide affordability in and of itself. So I have a track record at my time at the Tenant Union, I know how to hold developers accountable, I know how to fight for equity and for communities all across this city. And I'm asking for your vote, because we have to organize, we have to build power in the community to respond to the kind of economic displacement that we're seeing happen all over town. So my name is John Grant, I ask for your vote, I ask for your support. If you have any questions, you can go and check out our campaign website at electjohngrant.com. And we are door-knocking in every neighborhood. We are building power, door by door. We've almost knocked on 20,000 doors so far, so that we can get our message out there. And I need your help to do it. So again, I run it out, is that 2 minutes or 2 seconds?
You've got 2 full minutes.
I've got 2 minutes?
Go nuts!
Oh, let me tell you what I did today. What I had for lunch? No. Sorry, I'm used to formats where you get like 2 minutes, I get 5 apparently, my gosh. It's a luxury.
Everything's better in Delridge.
Agreed. Unless I'm in District 3 or something, then, not kidding. So, look, I just wanna end this with a thought. You know, when I was at the Tenant Union and we were working with the Lockhaven tenants, we came to the city and we said, "We want you to use your legal resources, your financial resources, to intervene to stop this developer from evicting these tenants." And what we found was that the city had actually entered into a $400 million deal with that same developer to build multimillion-dollar condos on public land to the city's serial evictor of low-income tenants. It is the city's role to be fighting and protecting us, and the city has been aiding and abetting that kind of economic displacement. Those tenants came together and sued the city, because the permit had actually expired. And do you know what happened? Because those tenants organized in communities across the city, because they filed the lawsuit to get the city to do the right thing, they got a $5.7 million settlement, that land got resold, and $20 million is gonna go towards affordable housing and equitable development. And that just shows that when we come together and hold the city accountable, we can accomplish great things. But wouldn't it be great if the city was already there for us, if the city was already fighting those interests and holding our interests first and foremost, rather than breaking these back-earned deals that give multimillion-dollar handouts to these large corporations? That's what we really do have an eye on for the folks who are representing us at City Council. My name is John Grant, thank you very much.
Thank you, John. And now Teresa Mosqueta.
Thank you so much. I'm really excited to be here. I apologize for my shorts and my kicks, I was out door-belling today, and then went to the firefighters' hall and did some phone banking and came straight here, so I also apologize for being late. I'm Teresa Mosqueta. I'm running for Seattle City Council, position 8. And it's incredibly inspiring to be here in this neighborhood. My first job out of undergrad was actually just down the hill from here, working at C-Mark Community Health Centers. Are folks familiar with C-Mark? Out of South Park. And we'd come up here for lunch sometimes, and we'd hang out a lot in this area, where a lot of my friends at the time were getting their first apartments, getting their first homes. And I look around Seattle right now, and I want to see more of us able to get our first homes and be able to stay in our apartments in this city. I grew up in this area. My parents are both teachers and activists. My dad teaches political economy and social change down at Evergreen, and my mom is an early-learning professional by trade and worked in education her entire life. But really, they taught me what it meant to be an activist and an advocate, and take to the streets, and stand on strike lines, and be there standing shoulder to shoulder with the most vulnerable. In fact, me and my little sister would often come to meetings like this on the weekends or evenings, and we'd be in the back corner, drawing our own handmade signs for rallies and protests. And we'd be there, standing with our parents, with our community, standing up for the most vulnerable. And that's, I think, where I get the fire in the belly to do what I do today, which is stand up and fight for working families, fight for the health of seniors and kiddos, fight for greater economic stability in our community. At my first job, when I was down at C-Mark, I saw seniors coming through the door every single day. I ran a program for senior information and assistance with the area agencies on aging and senior services in Seattle. And the purpose of the program was to help those seniors who were coming through the door get that plastic medical insurance card. But the reality was, after dozens of seniors coming in every hour, every day, you realize it's not a plastic medical insurance card that's... I grew up in this area, my parents are both teachers and activists. My dad teaches political economy and social change down at Evergreen, and my mom is an early-learning professional by trade, and worked in education her entire life. But really, they taught me what it meant to be an activist, and an advocate, and take to the streets, and stand on strike lines, and be there standing shoulder to shoulder with the most vulnerable. In fact, me and my little sister would often come to meetings like this on the weekends or evenings, and we'd be in the back corner, drawing our own handmade signs for rallies and protests. And we'd be there, standing with our parents, with our community, standing up for the most vulnerable. And that's, I think, where I get the fire in the belly to do what I do today, which is stand up and fight for working families, fight for the health of seniors and kiddos, fight for greater economic stability in our community. At my first job, when I was down at C-Mar, I saw seniors coming through the door every single day. I ran a program for senior information and assistance with the area agencies on aging and senior services in Seattle. And the purpose of the program was to help those seniors who were coming through the door get that plastic medical insurance card. But the reality was, after dozens of seniors coming in every hour, every day, you realize it's not a plastic medical insurance card that somebody needs in order to be healthy. It's important, and right now we're fighting like hell to make sure everybody can keep that card, but what they really needed to be healthy was the ability to put a roof over their head, and good food on the table, and have transportation assistance to get to activities so that they could be with their peers and be with their community. So many of them had been pushed out of their communities and were experiencing social isolation. So those are the big-picture public policies that I wanted to help address and change. And I went on to get my masters and worked in public health, creating the infrastructure and system so that people could actually have healthy communities around them, safe routes to schools, walkable, bikeable neighborhoods. At the Department of Health, I worked there, and it brought to mind what we talked to seniors about over and over, which was you can't just tell someone, "You should be healthy, you should go outside and go for a walk, you should eat right", when people quite literally don't have sidewalks in their community, and they quite literally don't feel safe because there's not a street lamp, and traffic is whizzing by, or they're in a food desert and they don't have a grocery store, let alone a pee patch. These are the things that I think that the Seattle City Council role can do to actually invest in and lift up families. And so my background's in health policy. I worked at the Children's Alliance, fighting to make sure that every child, regardless of their citizenship status, had that plastic medical insurance card. I fought to implement Apple Health for Kids, and then I sat on the Insurance Exchange Board for four years, actually trying to make sure that we delivered on the promise of the Affordable Care Act. And my roots are in public health, and I work right now in the labor movement, because I recognize it is a plastic medical insurance card that we want everybody to get, because healthcare is a human right, but we also need to be doing more of what I think Seattle City Council is so famous for, and that is investing in working families, lifting up low wages like we did right here in Seattle, passing $15 an hour, passing sick leave, and now making sure that we implement family leave. I'm fighting for a Seattle that actually will create an economy that works for all, not just the wealthy few. I'm going to be fighting for good living wage jobs, yes, but also making sure that families have affordable childcare. This is the most expensive place in the country to have childcare. It costs more to send your kiddos to childcare for a year than it does to go to the University of Washington for a year, and that's not right. I have a proposal that would make sure that nobody pays more than 10% of their income on childcare. And I want to make sure that we pass equal pay in the city of Seattle, because I'm tired of us making 78 cents on the dollar. And especially for women who are people of color, making even less. We can do that here in the city, and I've worked at the state level on a bill that I'd like to see implemented here in our city. And I look around the city, and I look at the lack of affordable housing as a public health crisis. I'm getting married in about a month, if you can believe that, and me and my, thank you, me and my husband-to-be, we love Seattle, we play soccer on Wednesdays, we play here in West Seattle, we play across the city. We've been looking for a place to buy, and it's out of reach for us, and we are, by all intents and purposes, middle-income, we're lucky in the city, but we can't afford a place. I want to see affordable housing for low-income and middle-income, and for us to treat the homelessness crisis like the public health crisis that it is, get folks in the door, get them housing-first options, and then make sure that they have case-management services, mental health counseling, and substance abuse services. And lastly, I'll be fighting for a Seattle that protects the rights of every resident here, because now cities are the first line of offense and the last line of defense. I'll be there, fighting for you. Again, my name's Teresa Mosqueta, running for Seattle City Council, Position 8. Thank you.
All right, and next speaker is Haisham Gweli.
Hello, my name is Haisham Gweli, I'm running for Seattle City Council, Position 8, and I want to start with my name, because my name is important. My mom named me Haisham for a reason. Haisham translates in Arabic to "young hawk". And just like the hawks protected the nomads as they crossed the desert, she said, "You too will protect and serve the community and our family." This moment is where my life begins and my trajectory starts. I take my skills and go to medical school, because I believed I could help the most vulnerable and the most disenfranchised by practicing medicine. I choose family medicine and psychiatry for a reason, because I wanted to take care of everybody, no matter what their age is, no matter what illness they had, or where I met them. This inspires me to practice international health, where I go to Guatemala and reduce under-five mortality rates in rural villages by 50%. I then take those skills in Guatemala and develop a program to empower indigenous women to become leaders in their community despite living in male-dominated societies. That translates to a mobile healthcare bus in Egypt, where I then work to serve the rural villages my parents grew up in, and ultimately I go to Nepal, where I start 10 free health primary care clinics and a burn center. I do this work because I care about people, because I care about what happens to the most vulnerable, and I believe that every life has dignity and value. I then took my skills and went to Emory, where I became the Medical Director of Geropsychiatry and Neurodevelopmental Disorders. I then get recruited to the University of Washington and come here willingly, because I knew this would be a place that would welcome both me and my partner. I am an Arab-American Muslim and gay. My partner is a Peruvian immigrant, and the time we fell in love, he was undocumented. We knew we could come here, get married, be welcomed, and start a home together. I got into this race because I was frustrated, and I was frustrated practicing medicine in one of the most affluent places in the nation. And what was striking to me is I was taking care of 27 patients, and 20 of them were homeless. This didn't include the amount of patients that were boarding in our hospitals. It turns out at any given time, there were anywhere between 60 to 100 mental health patients boarding in our hospitals because we don't have beds for them. And I said, "This isn't right, and we have to do better." And I remember having a conversation with a nurse, and the nurse said to me, "You know, Dr. Gweli, there are people who make the rules and people who follow the rules." And I said, "If it takes the work to change the rules, then City Council is it." And therefore, I got into the race. My platform is on home. It's based upon this idea that everyone deserves a medical, physical, and cultural home. What that means is expanding our federally-qualified health centers to make sure that everyone has health insurance in our city. It means talking about affordable housing in a real way, not just talking about slogans and numbers, but how can the city actively invest in affordable housing so that the most disenfranchised get to stay here? It's about culture. It's about what makes Seattle special, and how do you preserve it, despite the fact that we are developing and we are growing? This is about tree canopies, and this is about sidewalks, and open space, and community, and developing what makes Seattle great. I care very much about what happens to people. I've spent my whole life doing it. I love my career as a doctor, but the reason I am inspired to run for City Council is I'm hoping I can make bigger changes so that everyone has a dignified and quality life. My name is Haisham. I'm hoping for your vote, and I'm hoping you will let me live up to my name. Thank you.
And our next candidate is Mac McGregor.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for coming out on a nice summer evening. I want to say that I'm honored to run with all of the people that are here, because this isn't an easy thing to do. If you don't believe me, just try it next time. And all of these people are people that have stepped forward because they care, nobody would do this if they didn't care. So I'm honored to be in their company. I come from the South, I survived the Bible Belt. Yes, I did, I'm mostly recovered. I moved here in 2008, and I moved to this city because I knew this was a safe place for me to medically transition. I am the first transgender person on a ballot ever in the state of Washington. And prior to that, I lived the first 40 years of my life as a female small-business owner and athlete, I was on the US Karate Team. So I had to make a choice to do what I loved or be true to who I was, because they wouldn't have allowed me to compete if I would have transitioned earlier. The Olympic Committee doesn't know what to do with transgender people. So I competed until I was 39. So then I was free to be true to who I was inside. So I moved here because I knew this was a safe place and a city that had the resources of professionals and people who understood how to take care of transgender people. I love that about this city, that we really, we don't just tolerate diversity, which is what they did where I was from, there was a little bit of toleration. We actually celebrate diversity here, and I appreciate that about Seattle. And yet, there are so many things we still need to work on, and that's why I'm running for City Council. I was appointed by the mayor in 2011 on Seattle's LGBT Commission to advise the mayor and City Council on LGBTQ issues. And so I worked with many of the City Council members and two mayors on those issues, and was a part of helping pass a few things like the bathroom bill and transgender healthcare for city employees. We also worked with the Women's Commission on paid sick leave. So I've been a part of that, and that gave me the political bug of, "Oh, this is important, and I could really do some things to help create change." So that's why I stepped forward, also because we need more diverse voices at the decision-making tables. We have had the same type of voices for many years at these decision-making tables, and I think diversity is very important. I'm a renter, my wife and I are renters, we live with a teenager in this city on under $50,000 a year. So we survive on that in this city. So that perspective is a good perspective to have at City Council, where our current City Council's net worth is $26 million. So I want you to think about that. It's hard for some of them, not all of them, but some of them, to relate to what the rest of us have to deal with on a daily basis. That's why it's important to have different perspectives at the table. My background is in safety, so then I traveled the world, literally the world, everywhere, South Africa, Israel, all over the United States, teaching safety and self-defense. I've taught in women's shelters and women's prisons. I know it's hard for you to imagine now, but prior to transition, I had Farrah Fawcett hair, believe me, yeah, it was wild. But I was empowering people through them learning self-confidence and safety. And I think that one of the biggest and most important things our City Council can do is make sure our citizens are safe. There's a few things going on in our city right now that don't make us safe, and one is police oversight. I also helped develop the transgender policy for Seattle Police Department on how they deal with, and helped train the officers on how to deal with transgender people. So I've worked with them, and I'm a defensive tactics instructor for law enforcement. But we need oversight, we need citizen-run oversight on use of force with the Police Department. Having any department of any kind be the only people that investigate themselves never works and never creates trust. So one of the things I want to work on is creating that citizen review board and transparency, more transparency in our city. We need that all over the map. I think we have money that is not being used well, there's not much oversight with it, and we need more transparency with that. And one of the things I want to call for is that transparency. I'm Mac McGregor, thank you for being here, I'll be around to talk to you afterwards. Thank you.